Good evening. I'm Jay Nagreeney, President of the Wilson School Board, and I call to order the November 17th, 2014 Wilson School Board meeting. I apologize for the delay. We had an executive session earlier this evening that held us up. Could I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Schimmelweske.
Here.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Here.
Mr. Metzger.
Here.
Mr. McReed.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Could everyone please stand for the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Moravich, our announcement on public participation.
There's two opportunities for the public to address the board. One is on agenda items, which is immediately before the agenda. The other is on non-agenda items, which is at the end of the meeting. It's a three-minute opportunity. It is not question and answer, but is an opportunity to provide comment to the board on issues that may come before it.
As far as Wilson good news, again, I don't want to steal Mr. Wolf's thunder this evening, so we'll save some of the good news for later. I need a motion to approve the November 3rd, 2014 minutes. Dr. Chimaleske, seconded by Mr. Hop. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Agenda item number one, Dr. Chimaleske.
Mr. President, I submit the treasurer report, investment report, and the general fund financial reports.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Hop, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
Agenda item two, payment of bills. Dr. Chimaleske.
Mr. President, I submit the following bills from the General 2014-15 Fund in the amount of $2,588,672.4, capital reserve fund from 2014-15, $375,974.70, and from the 2010 construction fund allocated toward 2014-15 of $1,500.
Is there a second to the payment of bills? Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Agenda item number three, financial reports. Dr. Chimaleske.
Mr. President, I submit the following, the cafeteria childcare and activity accounts from Wilson West Middle School, Southern Middle School, and the senior high school, all for the month of October 2014.
Is there a second to approve the financial reports? Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
Are there any communications this evening?
None.
This evening, we have a presentation on the audit by Herbine &amp; Company.
Chris, Chris Tettell from Herbine &amp; Company is here to report the year-end audit for June 30th, 2014. This is the manager on the Wilson School District account. Will Chris make the presentation, please?
Good evening. Instead of having you flip around your binders tonight unless you'd really like to, I just have it summarized, and we're just going to go straight down to summary. And if anybody has any questions, concerns, just stop me along the way. So we did meet with the Finance Committee on November 5th, and we did spend much more in detail review at that point in time. So I'm just going to go through the highlights of the audit. So we do have an unmodified opinion. So unmodified, cleanest opinion we can give as auditors. So we have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. No material adjustments were made after we received our trial balances, so that's a clean opinion for the district. In the general fund this year, the general fund generated a surplus of a little over $2.8 million, which is about 3% of total budgeted expenditures for the district. Surplus came from several different places, including earned income tax, marginal taxes, some savings generated through personnel, and other changes in insurance for the year. With that surplus, that leaves the total fund balance for the general fund at $10,271,303. Now that is the same number we had at the end of June 2013, because the $2.8 million was transferred over to capital projects for future capital needs. Of that $10 million at the end of 2014, about $4.5 million of that is unassigned, which is 4.8% of your 2014-15 budget, which is within your 3% policy and 5% policy, no, 3% policy, and 8% that the state requires that you stay below the mandate for. So that is a summary of the general fund, nice and tidy and neat. On the capital projects side, as of June 30th, we had a little over $10.5 million in restricted fund balance in the capital projects account, which is mostly from surpluses that were transferred over from previous years. Not much bond proceeds are actually left in the capital projects account. Moving on to the enterprise fund, so the district does have two enterprise funds, the food service fund and the childcare fund. The food service fund broke even for the year before the $60,000 transfer over to the general fund. And from what we've seen across the board on food service funds, that's actually fairly a good financial position from what we've seen from many of our districts, struggling with the new menu items and keeping up with the Hunger Kid Act. The childcare actually had a surplus this year before transfers of $272,000. It was, it did transfer a little over $130,000 over to the general fund, and that was a little different from the past. The actual charges that the general fund made to childcare were much more accurate than they had been in a sense of actual expenses for many items, from janitorial to insurance, really operating it as its own entity, more so than it has before. Keeping in mind, what's not included in that surplus this year was also almost $200,000 in upgrades that happened over at the childcare facility, all paid out of childcare funds. So we've really seen a nice turnaround going through in the childcare fund there. Really has become a lot more autonomous than it has been in the past, and we're hoping to see that continuing and have nice reports to give to you at this point in time. Lastly, we did test the National School Lunch Program this year for your federal revenues. So National School Lunch Program includes the breakfast program. It's about 38% of the total federal revenues that the district does receive. We had a clean audit opinion on the testing of the food service program also then, so that means that we had no findings in internal control over the compliance requirements that we tested, and that the district was in compliance with those requirements that we did test. So when we have an unmodified opinion on financial statement and on the federal programs, as auditors, that's the cleanest opinion that we can give to a school district for our audit. And that is all I have for you this evening. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got a general question on the senior audit act. It seems like more and more schools are now looking at consolidating, or actions are consolidating, but the foundation's becoming part of the financial statements. If 100% of those activities are falling within the school's, I guess, umbrella, your thoughts on that?
Well, we look at when we see about consolidating as a component unit.
Right.
Bringing it in that way, we really look at the structure of the governance of the foundation as really the overriding factor. So who's making the determination on where the funds from the foundation are really going? Once we see that, that's usually where we come up to see if a recommendation for consolidating it in. Being that the way your education foundation's set up, you do have a separate governing body at this point in time, so that allows us to keep it separate. We also look at it from the standpoint, if I'm a reader of the financial statements, am I misled that that foundation's not incorporated? And, you know, from our standpoint, in our opinion, it's not misleading the reader to not include that in the financial.
I agree with that. I'm just from the.
So normally, we don't normally see it included, only when this board would also be the same exact board that handles the foundation meeting. Any other questions? If not, I just want to thank Diane and Christine for all their time, and they make this a smooth process, and we appreciate being of service at the district, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. I want to thank Chris for all of his work. We really, you know, Diane feels we get value from Herbine's involvement in audit, and I want to thank Diane and Christine, because they really do a great job. As Chris said, we got a clean audit. There were no adjustments to, after they got the trial balances, which can always be said of, I'm sure, of every district, but they've done a good job. And also, talked about the food services, and that is something that Diane works on on a regular basis, something we're keenly aware that's a challenge for this district and every district. And also, really, hats off to Steve Good, because this board and the Finance Committee has taken great strides and given direction when we hired Steve, that we wanted childcare to be a standalone business and not be a drain on the district as a whole. And as Chris mentioned, we have charged childcare with the expenses that they've incurred. They've done improvements to that building, and still were able to transfer positive earnings to the district. So I think we've made a lot of strides, and Steve, you've done a great job over there, so I thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ehrlich. All right, at this time, is there a motion to accept the audit report from Herbine &amp; Company for the year ended June 30th, 2014? Dr. Chimaleske, seconded by Mr. Hop. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
Agenda item four, ratification approval of the following, 4.1, request permission to approve the revised 2014-15 field trips and participations as attached. Is there a motion for 4.1? Mr. Ehrlich, seconded by Dr. Chimaleske. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent's report, Dr. Gerhart is sitting in on behalf of Dr. Ruth this evening. I believe this is only the second time in his tenure that he's missed a school board meeting. It's for a very important family function involving church, and so Dr. Ruth has been excused from attending tonight's meeting, so Dr. Gerhart.
Dr. Ruth extends his apologies for not being here tonight. The staffing recommendations that you have on there, again, what you see each time we meet represents a number of moves of support staff that represent a really robust staffing support that we have for our students. You also see some items on there for extracurricular and also intramurals. One of the things that you will notice going forward is, in the past, various employees that assisted with our intramural programs were paid through a timesheet process, but we have moved to have these people approved through a board process going forward. There are no professional staffing appointments on this agenda or retirements, but you will in the next month or two start seeing some recommendations for long-term subappointments as we currently have nine expected long-term vacancies coming up for the second half of the year. So we have started this week to post and screen applications and begin the interview process to fill those positions for the second semester. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gerhart. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's report? Dr. Chimaleske, is there a second? Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
All right, under Human Resources, 7.1, request to authorize termination of Robert Montgomery Custodian effective November 17th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve 7.1? Mr. Hop, is there a second? Mr. Ehrlich, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
Under Pupils Services, 8.1, request approval of the resolution approving and adopting Student Discipline Waiver and Consent Agreement dated November 4th, 2014. 8.2, request permission to ratify contract with Hogan Learning Academy, LLC, to provide educational services to one special education student at the discount rate of $345 per day, including all related services, beginning November 3rd, 2014, and ending June 3rd, 2015. And 8.3, request permission to approve contract with Elwin Opportunity School to provide educational services to one special education student at the rate of $156 per day, beginning October 28th, 2014, and ending June 12th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Mr. Hop, is there a second? Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
Under Finance, 11.1, request permission to submit the following delinquent accounts to Berks County Tax Claim Bureau, three Spring Township 2013 January interim tax bills, and one Lower Heidelberg Township 2013 January interim tax bill. 11.2, request approval of the budget transfers dated October 16th through November 12th, 2014. 11.3, request approval to award a fuel contract for the 2015-16 school year through the Berks County Joint Purchasing to PAPCO Incorporated at a price of $2.3177 for unleaded gas and $2.6346 for diesel, both decreases from the prior year. 11.4, request approval to open a new general fund free business checking account and business debit card attached to the new checking account only with Tompkins Vist Bank. 11.5, request approval of the attached resolution approving the plan of merger between the Berks Earned Income Tax Bureau and the Berks County Tax Collection Committee effective January 1st, 2015, and authorizing the board representative to vote in favor of the merger at the EIT Executive Committee meeting. And 11.6, in light of Mr. Martin's notice that he will not be attending the upcoming meeting of the Executive Committee of the Berks County Earned Income Tax Collection Bureau, the fact that the district needs a representative at that meeting to vote in favor of the merger between the TCC and the Bureau, and the fact that Mrs. Diane Richards will be serving as the district's representative on the TCC after the merger with the Bureau is complete on January 1st, 2015, a motion is hereby made to replace Mr. Martin with Mrs. Richards as the district's representative on the Executive Committee of the Berks County Earned Income Tax Collection Bureau effective immediately. Is there a motion to approve those items? Mrs. Reed, is there a second? Mr. Hop, questions or comments? Mr. Martin?
I've got nine pages here, but I think I spared you by narrowing it down to three. And I'll try to read this, because I don't want to get off track here. Basically annoyed me that the person, being me, has the most knowledge, 10 years on that board, and knows all the operations of BIT, was not even consulted or offered to participate in the meeting that was the outcome of this particular document. Instead, I received an email from Jay telling me that the committee, Rudy, Diane, Jay met and determined that this was necessary due to several factors, two of which were concerns from Diane that the expenses have increased, as well as revenues have remained stagnant. Well, revenues, for one, can't increase greatly, because it's a function of earned income and revenue from other areas can possibly increase, but not drastically. The expenses did increase substantially, in part due to the TCC's unnecessary and delayed actions by the Executive Committee. This costs taxpayers thousands of dollars. The thing that bothers me the most of all this is the TCC committee made threats, including, you know, blackmailing many of the members that we did not agree to this merger. The TCC would put this out for bid again, and possibly jobs would go to another county for, I guess not for attorney, but until things changed. If you recall, this happened two years ago when the original bid went out. Berks County EIT did win it. They had the lowest costs and were awarded the agreement to collect taxes for the schools in Berks County. As I said, I received this by email of the outcome of this meeting, and it would be served no point to discuss people's qualifications, that's not the point of what I'm saying. But I do want to make a point here, and this is how it was handled. I believe that not including all parties, especially that ones that had the most knowledge in the actions of this particular entity, really showed a lack of professionalism and somewhat a slight toward me. I've been asked several times to please discuss issues before they come to the board with certain parties to avoid conflicts, and I feel I've upheld that over the last 18 months or so. In closing, Ruth told me that I would have a chance to present or have the opportunity to present my case to convince the board to do otherwise, and I'm not here to do that. I just want to let you know that I felt it was kind of a slight, the way it was handled. And it's not a matter of who's right or who's wrong, it's just that I thought I deserved that courtesy. That's it.
The only comment I want to make is, I want to comment that I think that in the last, you used that 18-month period. I think you've been an excellent board member in the last 18 months. You know, my motion, or my second of this has, is, I can only speak for myself, is no slight of you. It just appears that that's the direction that this committee, that the EIT or the version of it is going in terms of using the in-house financial officers on that board. But I do want to commend you personally that I think you've been a good board member. I'm proud to serve with you.
Thank you.
You get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Eight, or seven-four, one against.
Under Child Care, 15.1, request approval of the 2015-16 Wilson Child Care Budget. 15.2, request approval of the 2015-16 Berkshire Heights current and proposed rates, along with proposed changes for preschool. 15.3, request approval of the Berkshire Heights contract, non-subsidized. 15.4, request approval of the Berkshire Heights contract subsidized. 15.5, request approval of the Berkshire Heights Early Learning Center Parent Guidelines Handbook School Year. 15.6, request approval of the 2015-16 school age current and proposed rates, along with proposed changes for the before and after-school program. 15.7, request approval of the school age before and after contract, non-subsidized. 15.8, request approval of the school age before and after contract subsidized. 15.9, request approval of the school age before and after-school program Parent Guidelines Handbook School Year. Are we missing anything else, Mr. Good? Very good. Is there a motion to approve those nine items? Mr. Hop, seconded by Dr. Chimaleske. Any questions or comments? Mr. Martin?
Yes, I was just going around with this, based on the rental revenues that were being generated from this project, and basically, if you use, you know, the capitalization approach, that building has a value of $470,000, which may be right or wrong, I don't know. But the question, I was thinking, maybe the Facilities Committee should consider just getting an appraisal to see if the rents justify or unjustifiable. That's it.
Certainly, Mr. Martin, our next facilities meeting, we can certainly discuss that and perhaps do that. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ehrlich?
Just so everybody's aware, Steve presented to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee reviewed these rates, that the increases and the changes were done as part of a comparison study to the other childcare facilities in the local area. So it was, weren't just numbers that were picked out of thin air. So Steve did a nice job of doing a pretty in-depth comparison and working with Diane.
Yes, he does. I look through those reports every month, and I don't think I've ever had to pull anything. So I commend you for the work that you've done.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. McReed.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chimaleske.
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes.
Eight-four, none against.
Under Policies, this is 17.1, the first reading of the Policy Number 707, Use of School Facilities. There's no need for a vote this evening. Mr. Martin?
Jay, I'm not trying to monopolize discussion tonight, but it seems like I am. But I thought, and I could be wrong, when we talked about the facilities on a Sunday being used, I thought we said we were going to start at 9:00 AM. That would be a starting time for Sunday.
As opposed to 8:00?
I think that's, that is my recollection also. I mean, I think this is a whole part of the three readings.
Yeah, it's part of the process. I think previously it was 9:00 to 12:00, and we're opening it up to 8:00, from 8:00 to 8:00 at this point. That was at the direction of Dr. Ruth. I did that too.
So, I mean, we have two other readings, and we can discuss, you know, further the pros and cons of that, and understand if we can get feedback from extracurricular community and facilities.
Yeah, so at this point, by my calculations, a final vote on that would be our December 15th meeting, so. Any other comments? All right, under Committee Reports, BCTC, Mr. Metzger.
The JOC of BCTC met last October, the 22nd, Wednesday, at BCTC West Campus. Our next meeting is November 26th at BCTC West Campus. Nothing else to report.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. BCIU, Mrs. Reed.
Hi, I'm Ashley. His birthday is 11/14.
Thank you. BCTI, Mr. Martin.
I'm Ed Gordon.
Curriculum, Mrs. Reed.
I'm Ashley. It's the 11th day of the year.
Extracurricular, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Two of the pieces of good news that Mr. Nagreeney was referring to earlier, first of all, coming out, our Boys Water Polo Program, they ended their season 26 and 3, and did bring home a state championship. So congratulations to the whole team and our coaching staff for bringing that recognition to Wilson. Also, they were recognized at halftime, if you're at the game last Friday, they were recognized at halftime of the football game, which is our other piece of good news. They have extended, the football team's extended their streak to 12-0, and once again will be hosting, I haven't even heard the team yet, do you know, CDs for the semis in districts at this point. And the only other thing I have is that today is our first official day of winter sports. That concludes our report.
I believe Mr. [inaudible].
First of all, coming out our Boys Water Polo program, they ended their season 26 and 3 and did bring home a state championship. So congratulations to the whole team and our coaching staff for bringing that recognition to Wilson. Also, they were recognized at halftime, if you're at the game last Friday, they were recognized at halftime of the football game, which is our other piece of good news. They have extended, the football teams extended their streak to 12-0, and once again will be hosting, I haven't even heard the team yet, do you know, CDs for the semis in districts at this point. And the only other thing I have is that today is our first official day of winter sports. So that concludes our report.
I believe, Mr. Wolf, that this marks our 17th state championship for Boys Water Polo, and the fact that the Boys Water Polo team went to North Penn, played North Penn in the state championship game, and North Penn was undefeated going into that game is something to be said, so congratulations on that.
I was there, and I have to say, we were outnumbered. And I have never seen an aquatic event, and I've been to quite a few in the past 10 years, that was that well-attended. It was literally standing room only with cheerleaders dressed as King Neptune for North Penn in blue paint, and there had to be two-thirds of the parents in there were North Penn parents and fans, so it was really intense. And they did a fantastic job. They really came together as a team in the tournament, and I think they all deserve the recognition they received.
The other good news is we are vying to host the state championship next year, and hopefully our boys will be able to defend their championship at home next year.
We certainly have more capacity and a better facility, but that's certainly a new development.
Finance, Mr., I'm sorry, I'm skipping myself. Facilities, no report.
Was that the point?
Finance, Mr. Erlich.
Of course, we didn't report.
Yes. H R, Mr. Hop?
No report.
Legislative, Mr. Martin?
Well, I've been told with the new leadership and the Republicans in control that there will be sweeping changes and reforms in the next session starting next year. I don't know what that means, but we'll see. I'm not hanging my hat in that, but.
Sweeping changes with a Democratic governor and the Republican legislature.
Well, I'm told there's supposed to be more cooperation. I don't, like I said, I don't know. We'll see.
P R, is Ms. Kramer?
Kristen is out there.
All right, and Mrs. Mack is excused from tonight's meeting if she's somewhere in the sunny confines of Florida enjoying herself. Technology, Dr. Chimaleski?
We've met today and discussed several things. We've upgraded, or are in the process of upgrading our servers that are about seven years old and are no longer warrantable. The servers are virtualized, putting in some more robust firewalls. Also purchased a number of Google Nexus 7 tablets for use at the elementary schools and begin training teachers in the elementary level with Google Chromebooks. We reviewed the status of our coaching, technology coaching positions, and I am pleased to report that the technology coaches have booked over 600 appointments for educators throughout the district to review various things, whether they're just beginning to integrate technology in the classroom or moving forward in other directions. This year, we have a student-run technology team as well that's just kind of getting their feet wet. We expect them to take off more next year. Trying to think if there's anything else. We also discussed some of our issues with bandwidth, although we have probably about a little less than twice the bandwidth that we regularly use. The demands for the future are going to be very, very high. And that was interestingly, probably more at the elementary level than at the secondary level due to how much media content the younger students use. I think that about covered it. Oh, no, damage to the Chromebooks. We had roughly slightly less than 5% of the Chromebooks in the first third of the year were damaged. About half of those were under warranty issues. And at the middle school level, we had less than 3% of the Chromebooks had been significantly damaged, again, half of those being covered under warranty. So for the most part, they're being well-cared-for, certainly better than almost any other one-to-one school that I know of averaging, which runs around 10%. So my congratulations to you, your classmates, and all your fellow students for taking care of the devices. They're not cheap. You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Dr. Chimaleski. Student outreach, Ms. Oshie?
In student news, J R T C hosted their annual veterans dance on Saturday, the 8th of November. Over 800 guests turned out for the event, meaning that it reached 100 people more than it did last year, which is awesome. It keeps increasing. As usual, the J R T C pulled off a beautiful event to celebrate veterans and all that they have done for our country. The 11th grade class officers are working on a food drive to benefit the Greater Berks Food Bank. And finally, the Powderpuff Game from two weeks ago raised $1,000 for Wilson Mini-Thon. And now it is time to extend the invitation to raise money to all of you, our board members. The Mini-Thon Committee members and student body are officially challenging all of you to raise money. If you are interested, we would ask that you create a donor drive account. I can help you guys with that, and that you take part in the friendly competition and raise money for the great cause. Don't let the students and faculty beat you.
I would suggest that then add a. Perhaps.
I would say we're in a minority. Unless you're going to wait that.
Well, all of us have, the board members have a Wilson School District email, so I am encouraging you to email us tomorrow whatever information that we need to do to establish that link, and I accept the challenge, and I'm sure the fellow board members do so as well.
As long as it's waited appropriately for our members, I'm not for it.
Very good, thank you. Education Foundation, Ms. Kramer is not here. Do we have any preliminary numbers? We had the Harlem Wizards here on Saturday. It looked well-attended. I saw some YouTube clips. It looked like there were a lot of students and adults there.
I know that Mary Jo is working on financial statements today. I will ask Kristin, if she's in tomorrow, to send something out to you through your emails.
Great, thank you. We did not win. Isn't that how it's supposed to be for these events? All right, Mr. Moravich, any report?
No report.
Is there any other business this evening from the board? Mr. Martin?
I'm full of doom and doom, but as you probably know, Japan announced today that they are headed back into recession. And I think it's important to understand, and one of the key reasons for that is they increased their, they put a national tax in place. That has taken and drained money away from consumer spending, which obviously it's not being productive. So Japan is heading to recession, and I think if you know what Pennsylvania looks like, it's not good either. The credit checks aren't going out. There's two thoughts of why they're not going out. One is there's no money to pay them. Two is they're understaffed and they can't afford to hire anybody, so I'd just be cautious about what we do, that's all.
Yeah, Mike, there was an interesting tidbit. The lost decade in Japan and the 1900s, people think we have low interest rates. There was a period of time in Japan where banks actually charged people to deposit money.
And certain countries in Europe are doing that right now.
Into their accounts. So. Did you do that? Okay.
Any other business this evening? And I believe we have.
Just along those lines, I believe there was an article, a piece in the Wall Street Journal where our president was espousing his advice to the G20 regarding green initiatives, raising taxes to support social programs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the advice from the columnist in the Wall Street Journal was, if you want to have a thriving economy, please don't do any of that.
Thank you. And we do have public participation on a non-agenda item this evening.
A David Perez. Three minutes, Mr. Perez.
I understand. I, my son is a two-custodial parent son, I don't know how to say that better than that, but anyway, I have him 35% of the time and my wife has him, or my, his mother has him 65% of the time, which is normally not a problem, except that the precedent has been set that school buses does not have to be provided to the 35%, only if it's 50-50. That's not what the judge gave me, so I don't have that. But it does create a problem for me because he either has to walk a mile or I have to get up and take him to, arrange to have him taken for a mile. I guess my only question is if there is space available, and this was not a problem before because we were on the same bus route. Now they split the bus route because of growth, and now they're on two routes, so now they, I cannot be provided, although the bus stops across the street. I asked for how many people were, how many vacancies were on the bus, and I was told by the head of the bus group that that was private information and protective of kids the same way you can give out information on an airline flight. I'm not sure I understood that, but it doesn't give me that information. They said you could get that information. So I could not, you could. So I just would like to know if there's four or five empty places on that bus. I don't think you're setting a precedent to let somebody go there, and if it's one or two, then he can't go, and I understand that. But I mean, that's something that to me, they should know how many people are riding these buses. That determines the needs for additional routes, et cetera. So I assume that's common knowledge, but it's not available to me. And so I just, I understand a solicitor can tell you, yeah, you don't want to set a precedent, and I can appreciate that, but on the other hand, if it's available and I'm willing to sacrifice if it's not available, but if it is available, it seems a waste to make my son walk a mile to get to his mother's house, that's how far away she lives from me, to take a bus. So I would just like, you know, you guys can discuss that at your convenience, but I just don't think showing him as a, we feed people free breakfast so we don't have to show these people can't afford it, so anybody can get it. And yet, my son, because he's in that type of an environment, is kind of shown up as being, well, you can't get all the services. Anyway, just, it bothers me, and she pays taxes, I pay taxes, we both own our homes. I just think you ought to be able to ride a bus, that's all. But again, I just wanted to present it to the board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, and please know that these concerns that you have are valid concerns, well-taken concerns, and certainly will be followed up on, and we certainly always want to take as best as we can a practical sense approach to resolving these issues. So we will certainly follow up on that.
Mr. Perez, I would just suggest, because I think one of the big things that Mr. Perez had is just understanding the information, what information we could get, is if he's willing and either if Dr. Ruth or Dr. Gerhard have the time to set up some kind of meetings to personally discuss the matter, to discuss the situation, what alternatives are legal, what are not, I think that would be beneficial if Mr. Perez thought that that would be helpful. If maybe if Dr. Gerhard could reach out to him. Thank you.
All right, at this point, it's, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Mr. Martin, is there a second? Dr. Chimaleski, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, good night, everyone. All right. Good night, everyone.[364.41]